Is Brian here? Good evening. We will call this meeting to order, a specially called meeting on the 21st of our city council. And we will start with an invocation that Ms. Melody Salter has agreed to provide, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please stand with me.
Sorry you'll have to make do with me tonight. I had somebody up for Monday, but he's going to do it at the next time. Can we close our eyes, please, bow our heads? Father, we just ask, come to you tonight, we ask you to forgive us for our sins, wash us, cleanse us, purify us in the blood of our Savior, Christ Jesus. Father, we pray for everybody that was affected by the bad weather on Monday. We pray, Father, that you give them all healing for anybody that was hurt, and you help them rebuild their lives. Father, we thank you for protecting Homewood and keeping us safe. Father, we pray for everybody here tonight, the council, they're making decisions. We pray that you give them wisdom and discernment to make the best decisions for the citizens of Homewood. Anybody else that's here, Father, tonight, that's facing personal decisions, career, any type of decision like that, we pray that you give them discernment, wisdom, and the right decisions to make, Father. We thank you and praise you for giving your son to die for our sins. In Jesus' precious name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Ms. Salter.
Yes, sir.
And if y'all would provide the roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gualtney.
Here.
Mr. Thames.
Here.
Mr. Higginbotham.
Here.
Mr. Wolverton. Mr. McCluskey. Mr. Jones. Mrs. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Wyatt.
Here.
Mrs. Andres.
Here.
Mr. Wright. And Mr. Limbaugh.
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum there.
We do have a quorum, absolutely. So, the next item of business would be the reading of the minutes from the March 12th, 2018 meeting. Chair would welcome a motion to dispense of said reading and approve the minutes.
Mr. President, I was going to let you know, Ms. Salter, there was a correction from the one that she sent out to us, and she's made that correction. So I move to approve with the correction.
Thank you, Ms. Andres. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Smith. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes seven, zero.
I had to count to see what that is, so that is seven.
No, it is seven. We're good. I saw you counting.
Yes, sir.
All right. Board vacancies or appointments? I would say to you that we've got a couple of vacancies that because of the irregularness of tonight's meeting, that we probably need to extend to April the 9th if we could. And which ones were those, Ms. Salter?
There were a couple of them that were supposed to set to close on the 26th. If it could be the Homewood Environmental Commission at large, and then the Library Board, Ward 1, since y'all are not meeting anyway again until April 9th, can we extend that to give time for more applicants to apply?
Would you agree with that, Ward 1 folks? Okay. Would you agree with that, Library? Okay, thank you. Good. So we'll do that. Is that good enough, Mr. Kendrick?
You're closing it on April 9th.
Yes, and if somebody has an objection.
Yeah. Does anyone have an objection? None.
Is it April 9th you're closing it at?
April 9th, yes. That's what we'll post.
Okay, Bruce, I need to open up the Ward 4 seat on the Homewood Historical Commission, Historical Preservation Commission, sorry.
Good. Do you feel like opening it April 9th?
April 9th would be fine.
April 9th, okay, good. And what else? Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Melody and myself, Ms. Salter and myself, received a resignation letter from our Ward 2 representative to the Homewood Environmental Commission last week, so I need to open up the Ward 2 seat. And I guess let's have that open until, what's our last meeting in April?
Well, 14 plus...
23rd.
23rd. Until the 23rd.
That'll work.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other vacancies or appointments?
One other one. We need to open up the Ward 4 Board of Education seat to be closed on April 9th.
9th or 23rd?
9th. It has to be, we have to do it in April.
Okay, good, okay.
So we'll close it on the 9th and then have it ready for the 23rd.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. All right. We'll move on to a most extensive amended agenda, so with the intent that Ms. Salter watches me very closely as we go through this, let me add quite a few items for tonight, okay? And these float between old business and new business. So here we go. 010318, request for consideration to work in the city right-of-way adjacent to 123 Edgewood Boulevard, requested by Scott Fuller and Greg Cobb with our BEZ department. 020318, request for consideration to remove a mature tree within the city right-of-way at 431 Cliff Place, requested by William Morton, the homeowner, and Wyatt Pugh, our BEZ department. 060217, request for consideration to work in the city right-of-way at 1769 South Lakeshore. And who was that one requested?
John Gray.
John Gray, thank you. I appreciate that. And was that also requested by?
Greg Cobb.
Greg Cobb, okay, good, 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 good. Thank you very much. 041017, request for consideration to authorize the mayor to sign a three-year WAN maintenance contract, requested by James Yates. 130218, request for consideration of ethics and OMA training requirements for City of Homewood Board appointees, requested by Mike Higginbotham. And 030318, request for consideration to purchase a full-page ad in support of the 2018 Homewood Magazine, requested by Barry Smith. 040318, request for consideration to fund up to $6,500 for a security camera at the soccer park, requested by Barry Smith and Jennifer Andres. 060318, request to set bid opening date for consideration of purchasing video equipment for use in Rosewood Hall, requested by James Yates. 160115, update on past, present, and future sidewalks, requested by Jim Wyatt and our BEZ department. We've got some items tonight, am I correct on that, Ms. Salter?
Yes, sir. And PND, they are going to make a recommendation.
Right, okay. So we'll turn that over when we get there. 210218, request for signage at Homewood Schools prohibiting cellphone usage in school drop-off zones, requested by myself. 050318, request for consideration to add a stop sign at the intersection of St. Charles and Earveen Road, requested by Brett Thames. 090318, request to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Gonzalez Strength to design the crosswalk at the Marriott on Lakeshore, requested by Jennifer Andres. And lastly, a committee referral item for special issues, Ms. Smith. 170318, request for consideration of a Homewood Environmental Commission presentation for current and future items, requested by Mike Higginbotham.
We forgot one, President Limbaugh.
I thought so.
Right, from PND, after you added 160115, they took one off the table, that 250417.
Yes.
They need to report about the 18th Street revitalization project.
And I'm not sure where I wrote it in, but obviously not in the right place.
It should be, it should be after 160115 and before 210218.
So, one other item will be 250417. Was that it?
Yes, sir.
Yes. 250417, request for consideration of 18th Street revitalization project, requested by Brett Thames. And I am going to try to determine where I added that, if y'all will hold on just one second. Yes, okay, good. I've got it in the part, but I didn't have it in the amended agenda. And I think that's all. Are you correct? Do you as well?
Yes, sir. I agree with you, sir.
Great. So the chair would welcome a motion and a second for approving the amended agenda, and any comments you've got, we'll certainly welcome them.
So.
Motion by Mr. Higginbotham, second by Mr. Gualtney. And since there are no comments, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is approved, seven, zero. So let's get right into it. We have no consent agenda items, so we will start with 160218, which is continuing the public hearing that we started on March 12th, 2018, for a fence variance at 1810 25th Court South to allow 15 feet of netting on top of a five-foot chain-link fence, requested by Vanessa McGrath. And as I said, the public hearing is still open. What is the current status of this situation? Someone, Mr. Cobb?
Greg, did you, did y'all?
They stopped work on the fence. This is Mr. Saleem here. I'll let him speak to that. But they stopped work on the fence, and I provided some photographs of what's up there, the tube metal fence.
Right.
There it is. There's one shot of it, it's got stairs that lead up, and that's where you go into it. And on the other shot of it, it's hard to see, but back in the tree line, you can see the other part of the fence. That would be, look at those trees, it'd be looking towards 18th Street.
Okay.
Up on the very top of the hill.
Okay, in that second picture.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I don't believe you can see it from 18th Street. I've not been able to, but I'm driving too.
So did you?
They've not worked on it since we had our last meeting, the discussion on it.
Okay, because I think there was some concern that the structure itself was, if, we wanted to make sure that it was structurally sound, especially to bear the weight of the netting that they were proposing to put on there. So I think we had asked that someone go out and take a look at that. Is that?
Well, I know that Mr. Wyatt looked at that, and we did not discuss that today.
Okay. Because I think that was the main question.
That was the question.
That we had the last time was...
Structurally sound.
Making sure that the support structure was structurally sound, because we certainly didn't want the, you know, that's, that heavy ironwork falling over onto a child.
Precious children.
Right.
So that, I think that was the main concern, and I know that's what we had requested, that that happened. But I know that Mr. Wyatt, Mr. Pugh was the one that was going to be doing that.
Right. I know that he went up there, and I made those pictures on a different day.
Right, okay.
But I know that Mr. Pugh went up there, but I did not have a discussion with him this afternoon.
Okay.
So I missed that.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, if we can...
Phil'll answer his phone.
We'll give you that opportunity. So what we'll do now, Mr. Saleem, is we'll go ahead and continue this, waiting on what information we might have. So we're going to move on to another item. If you'll have a seat, please, and we'll...
We'll pull you back up.
We'll call you back up, okay? All right. Let's move on to 030218. Public hearing set for April 9th, 2018, for consideration of changes from the zoning subcommittee to amend the zoning ordinance, requested by Vanessa McGrath. And again, because this is set for April the 9th, we will continue...
He already reported it out, we just need to carry it over.
Huh?
Mr. Thames already reported it out, so we just need to carry it over.
We'll just carry this over.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Now, next item is, okay, 010318, request for consideration to work in the city right-of-way adjacent to 123 Edgewood Boulevard, requested by Scott Fuller and Greg Cobb. Report from special issues, Ms. Smith.
Yes, the committee met right before the meeting, and this is a project where a neighbor, a resident, is putting in a pool. And the person who is installing the pool is going to relocate their AT&amp;T wires under the street, so the request is to work in the right-of-way to be able to do that. The resident is paying for that, and AT&amp;T is doing the installation, but they need permission to work in the right-of-way to do that. And we made a motion to approve that, four to zero, with Mr. Higginbotham making the motion and Ms. Andres seconding. Seconding.
All right. So we have the motion from special issues. Do we have any other discussion on this particular item? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is Resolution 1836, Mr. Kendrick?
Yes, sir.
All right, good. We'll come back to the, hold on. We will now come back to 160218 and the open public hearing. Do you have any information for us, Mr. Cobb?
Yes, I just spoke with Mr. Pugh, and he said he went up there and checked on it, and the poles that are mounted in the ground are eight feet deep, and they're in concrete infills, it is structurally sound.
Okay.
Okay, well, good.
That certainly answered one of the main questions, okay.
Yes, absolutely. Now, are there any other questions? I'm going to refer to Ward 1, because it's in your ward. Is there any questions from either of y'all?
I had one question for Mr. Cobb. I'm a little vague in this, but if, whenever you're caught working without a permit, there is a fine associated, I think it's $100, and doesn't that do something to your permit fee, like double it or triple it or something like that?
Yes, sir. What happens is you take the normal permit out, and the permit is doubled, and the fine is $100 on top of that cost.
Okay, and someone in BEZ will be sure and track that to ensure it's covered, since they're a repeat offender?
Whenever it hit our office for the first time, they put a note in the computer where they do the permits. So when they go to pull it up, it automatically comes up, so it doesn't get forgotten or go under the table.
Excellent, thank you.
They've got a pretty good system on that now.
I appreciate the clarification.
All right. Any other questions of Mr. Saleem while he's standing here? Okay. Anything else you'd like to say? Okay, good.
I appreciate that, thank you.
All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak to this item? If there's not, we will close this public hearing.
Sid.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, there's no one there.
Because there's no one else here.
I'm sorry. Just try to move along. Okay. Questions or comments from the council? There being none, chair would welcome a motion?
I would move to approve.
Motion for Ms. Smith?
I'll second.
Second from Ms. Andres. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, so it passes six, one.
Is that me, Mr. Kendrick?
Mr. Thames, yes. And that is Resolution, now that I've taken them out of order...
Oh, gosh, yeah.
That is Resolution 1837.
Yes, sir.
Next item is 020318, which is request for consideration to remove a mature tree within the city right-of-way at 431 Cliff Place, requested by William Morton, the homeowner, and Wyatt Pugh with our BEZ department. Report from special issues, Ms. Smith.
Yes, the homeowner's driveway, there is a tree in the city right-of-way in between two resident driveways, and both the driveways have suffered damage because of the tree root system. So the homeowner is asking to work in the right-of-way to have the tree removed at his cost. Ms. Andres made a motion to allow the work in the right-of-way pending the indemnification agreement, but also with the caveat that they replant a tree either on, on either neighbor's property after the tree in the right-of-way is removed, and release us from any liability, which will be included in an indemnification agreement. So that motion was made by Ms. Andres, it was seconded by Mr. Higginbotham, and the committee voted four to zero to approve that.
All right, so we have a motion from special issues. Do we have any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is Resolution 1838, and that passes unanimously. We'll move on to 060217, request for consideration to work in the right-of-way at 1769 South Lakeshore Drive, requested by John Gray and Greg Cobb. We're going to refer this to finance, because there are many involved, okay? But we will get a report from special issues.
I was about to say.
See, that was a pregnant pause.
We did go ahead in committee and vote, hmm, four to zero, I think? Yes, four to zero. First of all, to take the item off the table, because it had been on the table for a long time. Oh, that's right. I was looking at the four to zero for the, yeah, the, right, taking it off the table. So it was taken off the table, and then the committee voted three to one to allow the work in the right-of-way. This is a culvert that goes through the middle of Mr. Gray's yard, and he is wanting to do some work on it. So we voted three to one to send it out, to approve the work in the right-of-way, and then, of course, refer it to finance for funding.
All right, good, thank you. All right, we again are making great progress here. 041017, request for consideration to authorize the mayor to sign a three-year WAN maintenance contract, requested by James Yates. Report from finance.
Yes, committee met tonight, and apparent, we received two bids, but one bid was rejected because it didn't meet the specs. So Serium was the sole bidder, and Mr. Yates and Mr. Zanetti negotiated with them to lower their original fees, and the committee voted three to zero. Mr. Thames making the motion, Mr. Higginbotham seconding to approve that funding.
All right, we have a motion. Good, we have a motion from finance. Do we have any further questions or comments? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is seven, zero, and that is Resolution 1839. All right, our next item is 130218, request for consideration of ethics and OMA training requirements for the City of Homewood Board appointees, requested by Mike Higginbotham. And we'll start with a report from finance, Ms. Smith.
Yes, this is an idea Mr. Higginbotham had to help train our board appointees, because currently they aren't really receiving any training. So Jetty Trip has made a proposal to do a 500 one-time fee paid out of contractual services to help do an online video that will train those appointees. And we, like I said, pay that out of contractual services, up to $500. Motion was made by Mr. Higginbotham and seconded by Mr. Thames, and it was three to zero coming out of finance.
All right, good, thank you. All right, so we have a motion from finance. All in favor of this item, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is seven, zero. We'll move on to 030318, request for consideration to purchase a full-page ad in support of the 2018 Homewood Magazine, requested by Barry Smith. Report from finance, Ms. Smith.
Yes, committee voted and decided to approve this funding, paying out of the advertising line item not to exceed $2,000 to put an ad in the Homewood Magazine from the Chamber this year.
All right, we have...
And that was, I'm sorry, I don't know who made the motion, but Thames and Higginbotham, three to zero.
Good. Okay, so we have a motion from finance. Any other comments on this, knowing that the cap's 2,000? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes seven, zero. 040318, request for consideration to fund up to $6,500 for a security camera at the soccer park, requested by both Barry Smith and Jennifer Andres. Report from finance, Ms. Smith.
Yes, this is in response to some requests we've had from residents, and Mr. Squires has worked with us to come up with a plan to address issues that we've had questions about. So we met and voted three to zero to approve funding up to $6,500 out of, I believe, capital, the capital budget for Parks and Rec overflow fund balance. And I just want to clarify, because I said in the meeting that the soccer park currently had, had security cameras, it does not, but Mr. Squires wants them to. So after all of their other projects are done, he is going to ask that that be, and then they'll all be tied together. But he'd like to go ahead and do this one now, so that we can go ahead and take care of this little situation. So we voted three to zero to send that out, and I believe Mr. Thames made the motion and Mr. Higginbotham seconded.
All right, good, thank you, ma'am. With the motion from finance, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that is Resolution 1841. Next item is 060318, request to set the bid opening date for consideration of purchasing video equipment for use in Rosewood Hall, requested by James Yates. We're going to set the bid opening date of April the 9th. Does that sound correct, Ms. Smith?
Yes, at 4:30.
Okay. And that is now set, Ms. Salter, okay?
Just I remember, we probably, we probably have to have the specs there, but we probably take bids till 4:30, which is when we're open. I'm not sure, so you might want to set the bid opening like at 4:45?
Yes, yes. Set the specific time, if you would please. Thank you very much. Okay. 160115, which is an update on past, present, and future sidewalk projects. Let's do a report from PND, if we can, Mr. Thames.
Yes, sir. After a presentation, excuse me, from Mr. Cobb, committee moved to request that the Rumsen section, the section of Salter from Sylvia to Rockaway, and the Covenant Way section be moved to finance for approval. It was three to zero, Mr. Wyatt motioning, Ms. Andres seconding.
So we will, we will leave this, or we will move this to the finance committee for those projects, correct?
Correct. There's already a standing, you know, in finance, for addressing that one.
Okay, good, thank you. Anything else we need to do on that, Mr. Kendrick?
Yes, sir.
Good, thank you. All right. Next item is 250417, which is request for consideration of 18th Street revitalization project, requested by Brett Thames. We'll do a report, I think.
Yes, the committee voted to move this item off the table with this project beginning. GMC requested that a steering subcommittee be formed, just to provide updates and meet with GMC over the course of the project. The committee appointed Mr. Gualtney, Mr. Bischoff, and Mr. Cobb, as well as myself. Mr. Wyatt, motion, Ms. Andres was second, three to zero.
All right, good. We probably need a voice vote on that?
Yes, sir, just a motion to approve the committee.
Okay. We need a motion to approve their report.
Send it.
Thank you, Mr. Wyatt. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Smith. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, that is approved unanimously. Thank you, sir. All right. 210218, request for signage at Homewood Schools prohibiting cellphone usage in school drop-off zones, requested by myself. We'll start with a report from public safety, Mr. Wyatt.
Yes, Mr. President, the committee met tonight and voted to approve the ordinance that has also been approved by the Board of Education in its last meeting. The motion was made by Ms. Andres and seconded by Mr. Thames and passed three to zero.
All right, good, thank you very much. We will begin with the rating, Mr. Kendrick.
Yes, there's an ordinance prohibiting the use of wireless telephone communication devices while operating a motor vehicle on designated school zone property and on property designated by the school board as a no-cellphone zone, as designated by the posting of signage as identified in this ordinance, to provide exemptions to the enforcement of this ordinance and to provide for the penalties for the violation thereof, be ordained by the city as follows. For the purpose of this ordinance, a wireless telephone device is defined as a cellular phone, a text message device, a personal digital assistant, a standalone computer, or any other substantially similar wireless device that is readily removable from the vehicle and is used to write, send, or read text messages or text data through manual input. We'll define that as a cellphone. Number two, it should be unlawful for any driver or motor vehicle to operate a wireless telephone device or a cellphone on property designated by the school board as a no-cellphone zone designated by signage at the beginning and the entrance of the property, that cellphone use is prohibited on the property, as identified by signage identified in Exhibit A. Number three, it should be unlawful for the driver or motor vehicle within a school zone between the hours of 7:15 a.m. and 8:30 a.m., and between the hours of 2:15 p.m. and 3:30 3:30 p.m. to operate a wireless telephone device in zones designated as schools, zones as designated by the signage identified here above. And then there's a list of each school zone that the police department has recommended be adopted in the designation of those zones. Section four, that if any provision in this ordinance shall not apply to any person who uses a wireless telephone device and does any of the following. One is reports of traffic collision, medical emergency, or serious road hazard. B, reports of situation which a person believes his personal safety is in jeopardy. C, reports or avert preparation of a potential criminal act against the driver or any other person. D, operates a wireless device while the motor vehicle is lawfully parked with a vehicle transmission in the parked position. E, uses a wireless telecommunications device in official capacity as an operator of an unauthorized emergency vehicle. Five, that any person found guilty for violation of this ordinance shall be fined a sum of $100 for their first offense, notwithstanding any provisions. A party charged may dispose of the first charge by paying the amount of the fine to the municipal court owner before 12 p.m. on the date the case is set for trial in the municipal court. However, if a settlement is alleged, if a person is alleged to have violated this ordinance within 12 months, they will not be permitted to settle by paying the fee to the court before appearing before trial. Section six, if the signage identified in Exhibit A is to be displayed as the basis of the signage required by this ordinance. Section seven, any part of provision or is declared to be unconstitutional and invalid by the Court of Comptess Jurisdictions, and all of the parts remain in full force and effect, and that the ordinance or any part contrary to these provisions is specifically repealed. And section nine, the ordinance shall become immediately available effective upon the adoption by the city council and approval by the mayor.
All right, thank you, sir. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for unanimous consent. Motion by Mr. Wyatt, second by Mr. Gualtney. Roll call, please, Ms. Salter.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes, this will be ordinance 2690. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for adoption. Motion from Mr. Higginbotham, second from Ms. Smith. Roll call, please, ma'am.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes, 2690 passes unanimously, and I thank you all for that personally. 050318, request for consideration to add a stop sign at the intersection of St. Charles and Irving Road, requested by Brett Thames. Report from public safety, Mr. Thames.
Oh, actually, Ms. Smith.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Wyatt, I'll get there in a minute, thank you.
No problem. The committee met earlier this evening and voted three to zero to add a stop sign on the east-west portion of Irving. The motion was made by Mr. Thames and seconded by Mrs. Andrus.
All right, good. So, first reading, Mr. Kendrick.
Yes, there's an ordinance to further regulate traffic in the City of Homewood. Be ordained by the city council as follows. Section one, every person, firm, or corporation operating a motor vehicle in eastly direction on along Irving Road in the city shall cause the motor vehicle to come to complete stop intersection of Irving Road with a westwardly right-of-way line of St. Charles Street. Section two, that every person operating a motor vehicle in a westwardly direction on along Irving Road shall come to complete stop intersection of Irving Road with a eastly direction right-of-way line of St. Charles Street. Section three, that any violation of this ordinance upon conviction shall be punished as provided by section one-a of the Code of Ordinances. Section four, the chief of police shall erect or cause to be erected appropriate lines and markings set out in paragraphs one and two above. Section five, that the provisions of this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon approval by the city council and the mayor's or as otherwise becoming law.
All right, thank you, sir. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Thames, second by Mr. Wyatt. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes, this will be ordinance 2691, and we would welcome a motion and a second for adoption. Motion by Mr. Gualtney, second by Mr. Thames. Roll call.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes, so, 2691 passes unanimously. We'll move on to 090318, request to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Gonzales Strength to design the crosswalk at the Marriott on Lakeshore. We'll begin with a report from public safety, Mr. Wyatt, and then move to a report from finance, Ms. Smith.
The public safety committee met earlier this evening to discuss this item and voted three to zero to approve. The motion was made by Ms. Andrus and seconded by Mr. Thames.
Okay. Ms. Smith?
Yes, finance committee also met earlier this evening, and we voted to approve signing the contract with Gonzales Strength pending the verification of that cost.
Yes.
It's a lump-sum contract for an amount of $18,650.
Did any, did any of the finance committee members have a problem with that number? Is that good? Is that legitimate cost there?
Okay. Can I ask a question as finance director, real quick?
Sure.
Is that a project that we have budgeted?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
I've not looked at our budget.
What was that, Ms. Salter?
You asked if it was budgeted.
The 18th Street and all, though, those were already budgeted, but if they said budgeted, we'll have to give it a line item number in capital.
I've not looked at our budget in quite a while.
It didn't ring a bell to me.
I don't, I don't think this was, I don't think this was a budgeted item.
Then we'll have to use carryover fund balance and capital, and I'll have to assign it a project number, but I don't have it off the top of my head. I'll have to send it out to y'all. It'll be in capital projects, Fund 12, and the department will be 11, but it'll have to have a project code. And you're going to have to use carryover fund balance and capital.
Okay.
Because it wasn't a project that we already had.
Right, that we had budgeted.
Okay.
Is that, is that what y'all want to do? Let me just sign the number?
Finance committee, I see Brett had stand-up.
Greg, didn't you say you were going to try and lump in some other projects that needed some design work into this?
Well, since that one ties to Rumsen, I'd like to go ahead and have them do Rumsen at the same time. It'd be, it'd be more economical because they're already right there surveying.
Well, I was going to say, do you think you can do that and they'll, they'll keep the, this number close to where it is, or the same, if you add home?
I would say it's a separate project. I might get a break on the next project, but I don't, I don't think they're going to change this one.
Okay, then I guess my...
This is, this is DOT project, it's kind of very specific because it's got to please the DOT, whereas when we do Rumsen, it won't be nearly as detailed and go through as much hoops as what you have to go through with DOT.
Is there any grant money available, or is it just DOT? We pay the 18,000.
Well, the last time we messed with DOT, I think we found we're a lot more economical to do it ourselves.
Just asking.
DOT said this would not be a DOT project, it would be a DOT permit.
It's just a little difference there.
They're going to permit us to do it, but it's not going to be one of their projects.
All right. Any other finance people, questions? No?
Okay.
Okay.
Then I'm going to take this as a motion from public safety and finance. All in favor of this, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed?
Forty-two.
Good, okay. That'll be resolution 1842. All right, next is the committee referral agenda. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Higginbotham, second from Ms. Smith. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that too is unanimous. All right, 150318, request to authorize one voting delegate of the City of Homewood Council to vote at the Alabama League of Municipalities Annual Convention, May 19th through the 22nd, 2018, in Birmingham, requested by Melody Salter, our finance director and city clerk. Is this going to be Mr. Jones or Mr. Higginbotham? Or we, have we made that determination?
Whatever you want, you pick.
I get to pick?
Well, I mean, y'all voted last time, I think Mr. Jones was there last time because he was on a board, so y'all made him. I don't, I don't know this time if he's going to be in a board meeting or not.
Why don't I do this? We'll make that final determination soon, but in the meantime...
It's in Montgomery instead of Birmingham. That was last year, it was in Birmingham.
Yes, it's in Birmingham this year.
No, it's in Montgomery, it's a typo.
It said, okay. It's in Montgomery.
Birmingham.
And I think, I think, I think it's a typo, I think it's in Montgomery, but I'll verify.
It is.
Montgomery, yeah, I thought.
Your president will take applications and we'll determine who's going to do it.
They change every year, and I think we copied the one from last year, that's Birmingham.
Good. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval.
Motion, second.
Motion from Mr. Thames, second from Ms. Smith. All in favor, please say, I'm sorry, what?
You're really not approving.
Okay.
If we don't have a name?
Then we'll, we'll...
Approve it later.
We'll approve that later.
To be determined.
We'll carry that through.
You're carrying it over?
Sure.
Basically, the delegates you pick gets to vote for Homewood on whatever they're voting on, because you all, you don't, you don't all get to go get a vote, so you're voting for one person representing you on what they're voting for at the convention.
We'll make that determination later, thank you.
She'll carry it over, okay.
Okay. 160318, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of March 12th through March 18th. Mr. Thames?
Yes, sir, I reviewed the invoices, had my questions answered, added a few, so I would recommend payment of the vouchers.
Motion from Mr. Thames, second from...
Second.
From Ms. Smith. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is resolution 1843, and that is passed unanimously. We come to that portion of our meeting where we eagerly anticipate comments from the mayor.
Well, we are. Just a couple of brief things tonight. I just want to let you know, thankfully, as was mentioned earlier in Melody's prayer, that Homewood missed the storm Monday night, but some of our friends weren't quite so lucky. And so, Homewood Fire and Rescue, after we were clear, responded to Jacksonville and assisted in some search and rescue up there to help some with their command staff, so just wanted to say thanks to the guys and girls that went up there and did that. And then also wanted to just thank Dawson. Jack Fiskus called the morning of the anticipated storm, and as you know, we were expecting a lot of damage with large hail, and he offered the use of Dawson's parking deck to the community, which we put out, so just want to say thanks to them, and with that, I think that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gualtney?
The only thing I have to mention tonight is that we see Jennifer out the pressure of letting trust trail openings for voting trails reopening, so we've had a good experience getting out and seeing new sections of the trail. We encourage everyone to get out and look at it, and look forward to connections that will provide the broader reach.
Good, thank you. Mr. Thames, our next committee meetings are going to be April the 2nd, and finance is already set at 5:00 p.m., of which you're a part.
Okay. Jennifer, when were you planning to meet regarding the bridge? Will it be after April 2nd?
It'll be after April 2nd, yeah.
Okay. I don't think there's a need to meet then, P and D, and are we going to, we won't have a council meeting before then either, will we?
No.
So, I'm done reviewing invoices.
You are. My staff accidentally sent it to him early, and I never minded.
Hey, you could have just left it with him, that would have been fine.
When I started, I was, oh, earlier than I thought, but okay.
You almost got out of it this time, you didn't know it.
I've had an opportunity to go in and out of Edgewood the last couple of weeks, and I just wanted to thank the police department and point out that we're a blessed city to be able to staff up our schools. The police, increased police presence is obvious in the mornings and throughout the day. I think that's, that's fantastic. And I've got to put the mayor on notice. Brett Thames was elected mayor of Ms. Peterson's second grade class, and he made it clear that he has higher aspirations. So, look out.
Yeah, exactly.
You may be his campaign manager, right?
Yeah, exactly.
I'm an extremely proud dad, but that is all. Everyone have a great spring break.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to remind everybody that Homewood's Easter egg hunt, sponsored by Homewood Park and Recreation, will be this Saturday at, oh, great, my phone went dead wherever it was. It will be this Saturday, March the 24th, at West Homewood Park. That starts at 5:30 with the Easter Bunny and the games and prizes and the bounce house, and then if you go to the website, you can get all the specifics about age and what time, I don't want to go through all of that here. But I also want to point out, too, Trinity's Easter egg hunt will be earlier that day, on the 24th, at 10:00 a.m. at Trinity West, so there's not one but two Easter egg hunting opportunities this Saturday, so I encourage everybody with kids to get out and come over to West Homewood and enjoy the day. Thank you, sir.
Good, very good. Ms. Smith?
Um, I don't know.
Thirty minutes for, for finance.
Okay, all right. I think I just have one item that you added. So, I'm going to just say 5:30 to 5:45 for special issues.
Mr. Wyatt?
Ms. Salter, I don't think we have anything for public safety, because nothing new came tonight, and I don't think we had anything left on the agenda. Does that sound right?
I don't have agenda, but we cleared it tonight?
We cleared it tonight, so I don't think that needs to be set, but I do think Public, I don't know if you're getting it, Public Works needs to be set.
We'll set for 5:45.
So, we'll set that, yeah, 5:45, is that...
Yeah.
You're setting Public Works at 5:45?
Yeah. And then just wanted to thank everyone who came out to Corner Palooza. We managed to beat the rain and had a good time, raised some good money, and the tournament was won by none other than our own Patrick McCloskey.
Oh, I saw that.
So, when you see him, congratulate him, he, he found his talent.
Awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Wyatt. Ms. Andrus?
I wanted to remind everybody that this Thursday is the heart of Homewood. They'll be set up in this room here.